Could I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, solid, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
And one moment, could I ask everyone to please remain standing for just a moment? I think it would be appropriate to observe a moment of silence in memory of our dear friend, Michael Healy. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. I would make a motion to appoint Mark Gildea as the clerk of the joint convention.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? That motion passes. Attorney Gildea will serve as the clerk of the joint convention.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I'll ask the clerk to please, for everyone's benefit here, to please reference the ordinance that has brought us together here in council chambers this evening.
Section 36 of the city's charter provides that if a vacancy occurs in the school committee, the city council and the remaining members of the school committee shall meet in joint convention and elect a suitable person to fill the vacancy. The mayor shall preside at the convention.
Thank you. What the ordinance does not really specify is the exact process by which we make that selection and take that vote. So after consulting with both the city council attorney, Mr. Gildea, and the city solicitor, Mr. Nasserala, I am going to propose for ratification of the joint convention, a proposed process for this evening. I propose that we conduct a first ballot that would be a runoff ballot for the purpose of reducing the field of candidates. We have seven candidates that have expressed an interest in being appointed to the position. So the first ballot would not determine the selection, it would reduce the field from seven to two. And then we would go on to a second ballot of just the two finalists. In the event that there's a tie vote for either first or second place, all the candidates would advance, so we could potentially have three if two candidates received the same number of ballots. I think this gives all of the members of the joint convention an opportunity to express preference, but also gives everyone an opportunity to cast a ballot of selection based upon two finalists. All votes will be taken by a roll call vote, and if that is acceptable to everyone, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. President, make a motion to accept the process as stated.
Second.
All in favor? Close? All right, so that the process has been adopted. I think in the interest of time, there are seven candidates.
Mr. Chair, through the chair, may I ask a question of Attorney Gildea, the clerk?
Sure.
Attorney Gildea, early on, there was a discrepancy about the language with respect to what was deemed a suitable candidate. Could you please state for the record the determination that was ultimately reached the other day, please?
This issue was raised, and it's been reviewed with the city solicitor. And the situation is that, in order to be elected to serve the citizens of Ward Six as a member of the school committee, a candidate needs to be a voter of Ward Six and a resident of Ward Six.
So the determination as to suitable would address that specificity, that it be someone who is...
Yes. Section 31 of the charter provides that the school...
Attorney, can you... The votes are...
Can't hear you. Section 31 of the city charter provides that the school committee shall consist of the mayor, who shall be the chairman, and seven members, one of whom shall be elected by and from the voters of each ward of said city. We're filling a vacancy with respect to Ward Six, so in order to be a candidate, in order to be nominated, an individual needs to be from the voters of said ward.
Okay. So based upon that determination, there was one individual that expressed an interest in the position that was not a registered voter in Ward Six. Therefore, that person is not on the list of candidates for the position. So we have a list of seven candidates, and in the interest of expediency, I would entertain a motion on adopting a slate of candidates.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Slate of candidates as presented: Joyce Asak, James Daly, Stephen Foote, Jason Glanuski, Miles Jackson, Ozzy Jordan, and Jacob Taggart.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor? Close? Okay, so the slate of candidates has been adopted. In terms of allowing all of the candidates to present themselves, first, if I wasn't 100 percent clear, when we get to the second ballot on the selection of the individual to fill the seat, the person must obtain a majority vote. So if for some reason we had multiple candidates, or we had an even number of votes, we would go to another ballot until the selection has to... The person selected has to obtain a majority vote. Mrs. Joyce?
Point of clarification, Mayor, are we allowed to vote for more than one candidate?
No.
Thank you.
One ballot per a member of the joint convention.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I'd like a moment of personal privilege.
Sure.
Thank you so much. As you all know, I served, as we all did, with Mr. Healy and personally with him representing the residents of Ward Six. He was a fair and dedicated and caring individual who always put the residents of Ward Six first in his efforts, in his heart, and in his mind. It was often that I would sit down with him and talk about Ward Six, the issues that we had, and the special situation for children in our district. And I can only hope that we get someone of the same quality as Mr. Healy, and we have remarkable candidates here today. I personally am supporting Mr. Daly because he has been the only candidate who's been elected four times by Ward Six voters. And we all know that the people that Ward Six voters vote... elect aren't necessarily the people that would be elected in other sections of the city. We have a feisty group of people in Ward Six, and I think we're proud of that. So I just wanted to make that known. I think that the fact that he has been elected by members of Ward Six and would be able to hit the ground running on day one, which is a skill that none of the other candidates have, though the other candidates are excellent human beings and more than capable, really puts him over the top. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just for clarification.
Well, yeah, and I'm going to give a further clarification right now, but go ahead with your question, Counselor.
Okay. Now, with Ms. Joyce's question, the first ballot is to reduce the number of candidates, so we each get one vote for that, correct?
Correct.
So what if the person that we voted for in the first round does not go forward to the two...
The second ballot is a completely second vote.
Okay.
So the idea is to select the two candidates that have the most support and then give all members of the joint convention an opportunity to cast a preference and cast a ballot.
Okay.
So if the person you voted for in the first ballot is no longer on the second ballot, you're actually free to vote, even if they were on the second ballot, you're free to vote for whoever you want on the second ballot.
Okay. And is this a forum where abstentions are accepted, or no?
No, I think you have to cast a ballot.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So to further clarify, and maybe should I do this in the form of an amendment to term adjournance? Okay. We want all of the candidates present to have an opportunity to present themselves, and we also want to have an opportunity for members of the convention to ask a question if they have one. So in the interest of being fair enough time, the slate of candidates is alphabetical, so in alphabetical order of the candidates that are present, each candidate will be allowed two minutes to address the joint convention, to state their... whatever they'd like to state, but their reasons and their interest in the position. Any member of the panel can ask one question of one candidate, in the interest of time, and the candidate will have up to one minute to respond. We've got 18 panelists, seven candidates. I think we really have to have some time constraints in the interest of getting this done within a reasonable length of time while still allowing everyone here the full opportunity to do their due diligence. So...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, I'd like to accept that amendment in the form of a motion.
We've got a motion on the floor, seconded. All in favor of amending? Thank you, unanimous. So at this point, do we... Yeah, there are two members that are candidates for the position who are not present. The first one is Joyce Asak.
For informational purposes to the panel, I was informed by Ms. Joyce Asak that due to medical reasons, she cannot be here this evening. She sent that notification to myself and Counselor Sullivan, Council President Sullivan. So she would still like to be considered, however, she's unable to be here this evening. Expresses her desire to so be considered.
And also, Jason Glanuski is not present. Counsel Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair. Point of information, Mr. Glanuski indicated via email to me, unfortunately, he can't attend here tonight in person, something's come up in his family, but he does want to say he wishes he could be here, that he wanted to express his strong desire for the position. Thank you.
Okay. So there are two candidates not present, Joyce Asak and Jason Glanuski, who are, you know, are eligible to be selected for the position even though they're not present tonight. So going in alphabetical order, we'll take two-minute opening statements from each candidate. Mr. Jim Daly would be the first candidate to address the convention. Good evening, Mr. Daly.
Good evening. Long time no see.
Very good.
I had been a member of the school committee for four terms, eight years, slightly over eight years, and I had come in under actually similar circumstances when Kevin Nolan had passed away before my election and subsequent early appointment. I hope that doesn't bode bad for me if I get selected. I have, as I said, served eight years. I have enjoyed serving. I am always focused on the best interest of the students of Ward Six, but also of the city as a whole, because if our schools are serving Ward Six, they're also serving the other wards. We have one major high school and several alternatives. We have... I don't think I could even come close to enumerating the number of programs that we have in the city that we all need to be familiar with. Right now, city council and school committees in the midst of budget negotiations and contract negotiations. Most, I believe, of the non-certified are in settlement or close to. I know we're getting ready for negotiation with the teachers' union, and I would be willing to participate in any manner that I could. I served also on the community schools advisory board for quite a number of years, not only as a parent, but also as a school committee member. I have the experience, I have the knowledge, and I actually enjoy working on committees, seeing ideas come forward, seeing them brought to fruition, and sometimes never being similar to the original one, opposed, because of the changes, listening to others, making additions and deletions to the idea, and helping it work through the process.
We're over time, Mr. Daly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Our next candidate to address the convention is Stephen Foote.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the convention. My name is Steve Foote. I have... I believe I have the best combination of residency, education, life experience, political experience, and, by most important, the confidence of the residents of Ward Six to fill this position and fill it well from day one. I'm a 55-year resident of Ward Six, not just of Brockton, but of Ward Six. I attended the Brookfield Elementary School the day it opened. I was a student at North Junior High School, Brockton High School, class of 1974. I have an associate's degree from Massasoia Community College, and I also have a bachelor's degree from Northeastern University. I played in the Brookfield Little League. I played Ashfield Jets football over at the Ashfield School when I was a kid. I played in Brockton youth hockey. I was also a varsity hockey goalie at the Massasoia Community College in 1974. My political experience, many of you already know me, I'm a conservative Democrat. I've been elected the chairman of the Brockton Democratic City Committee three times. I retired just this year. I was also unanimously elected vice chairman of the Plymouth County Charter Commission, unanimously elected by both Republicans and Democrats. And when I was a student at Massasoia Community College, I was the budget committee chair, I was a student senator there, and I wrote the entire budget for the '94-'95 school year for the Student Activities Fund. As far as to the point that Michelle Dubois just made, the confidence of the residents of Ward Six. Last year at the Councilor-at-Large race, we had a preliminary race, 15 people were on the ballot. I was listed number 13. Mr. Daly, I believe, was listed number four or five. Out of Ward Six residents only, I finished third, finishing only behind Counselors Sullivan and Counselor Stewart. And at Ward Six D, I finished first. I beat everyone, including Counselor Sullivan, Counselor Stewart, and Mr. Daly. So I believe that shows the confidence that the residents of Ward Six have in my abilities. And one more thing I must be remiss without talking about my good friend, Mike Healy. Mike and I were good friends for 10 years. In 2011, when Mr. Daly moved to Colorado and did not run for reelection to the school committee, a large number of my friends and neighbors, including Michael Healy, urged me to run for the open seat. At the time, my mother had just passed away, and I was the sole caregiver of my disabled brother Gregory. I knew I could not make the time commitment necessary to do the job, so I recruited Mike Healy for the position. After many conversations and some serious arm twisting on my part, Mike agreed to take the position. After throwing himself into the job, Mike excelled in the two-plus years on the committee as I knew he would. I would like the opportunity to serve out Mike's term and return the favor he did for me and the residents of Ward Six back in 2011. I've made my intentions known to this entire panel by my letter of intent, and I also sent a letter to the superintendent of schools. However, I have not publicly lobbied for the position on the internet or in any other way. I do not want my lack of lobbying to be seen as an unwillingness and lack of interest in the job on my part. I just feel that a large lobbying effort would be disrespectful to the memory of my friend, Mike Healy. To sum, that may sound old-fashioned, but I believe it's the right thing to do, and I hope you'll give me your consideration for the school committee seat in Ward Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foote. The next name on the slate of candidates alphabetically is Miles Jackson. And I'll apologize for not noticing earlier, but I don't think Miles is in the room either. Is Mr. Jackson here, Mr. Miles Jackson? Okay. So I think that, as with the other two who are not in attendance, you know, he remains in consideration for members of the convention, whether present or not. That'll bring us down now to Mr. Ozzy Jordan.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to express to you my feelings about running for the school committee slot. I sent you all a letter. Some of that I'll repeat, unfortunately, because you're looking for information from me. My background, I think, if you read that letter, is pretty extensive. Some of the things I didn't put in there, I've been dealing with going to school committee meetings for over 32 years. Participated in a number of things. When different issues came up, I was right there, sitting in my usual seat up in the back, came down front, spoke to the group. When we talked about putting the two new schools together, there were a couple of the members that were sitting on the school committee that didn't want to accept the 90 percent of the funding that the state was offering. Some of you may have remembered, I took out my wallet, threw it on the table, and said, "Are you crazy? What do you want to do? You want all of us to pay 100 percent when the state wants to give us 90 percent?" Well, needless to say, that was one of the things that got changed. We ended up having the two schools that were just open a few years ago. When the reorganization on how schools were going to operate, et cetera, and the ability for principals to be the number-one person, and a number of other things that happened, MCAS was one of the good things that came along. At that point, I said, "We're going to be teaching to the test. That's going to be... It will injure our children. It will not allow the schools to do the things they need to do, all the extracurricular." Sure enough, about four years later, maybe five years at the most, we dropped a lot of our programs that were the extracurricular kinds of things, that, by the way, keeps a lot of our children coming to school because the academics are not so interested, but those extracurricular things are the things that draw them into school, music, et cetera, and all those other good things. My ability with negotiating with unions, doing budgets, administration, personnel, management, all those are things that were in the letter, and I assume at some point later you'll be asking questions, so you may hit some of those. My concern... My concern is that we provide a well-rounded education for each and every child in this city. And that means, in some cases, we think we have a few alternative programs...
Mr. Jordan, I have to ask you to wrap up your remarks.
We may have to have a lot more to address to everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. And I will now invite up to the podium Jacob Taggart. Good evening, Mr. Taggart.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to make sure I also express my gratitude to everyone for being here in this tough, unexpected situation. What I'd like to say is, again, to the majority of you guys, I'm a new guy coming here, especially with these other candidates that are here, but what I would like to express is, I'm not new. I've been in Brockton for 37 years, my whole life, 38 this month. The passion I have for this city and their young people, I've displayed since I was a young person myself. Mr. Iannari can attest to that, because I used to be a representative at Brockton High School for my fellow students. I used to attend school committee meetings all the time. At the end of the day, we can read the resume, I can say, I'm a district store trainer for a Fortune 500 company. There's some of you, I know some of you that don't, so some people may not know that. What I also can say is, I've been a youth activities coordinator for the Boys and Girls Club. I've been a youth activities coordinator for the YMCA. I've been a coach and a mentor for young people in this city for 20 years, since, again, since I was a young person. And while... I respect every gentleman that's here, I've actually built friendships with them, I don't think there's anybody up here that's going to fight for our young people like I am. I am going to be exactly who I say I am. We may not always agree, and I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to be upfront. That's just who I am. At the end of the day, I am here for our city and for our young people. That's why I want to be up here. That's where my passion comes from. I'm not going anywhere. I love Brockton, it's good and it's bad. And I do think I also possess a leadership ability or talent that I can bring people together. That is a skill set that I do possess. I'm a leader. And also in that, I also can follow, too. I can be part of a team, that being, I work for a Fortune 500 company. I'm a businessman. And at the end of the day, if we're here for our young people, I don't think there's anyone here that's been there for our young people. And that's no disrespect to anyone. I don't think there's anybody that's been here, that's in this city, that's proven I'm here for the young people. So again, I would appreciate your consideration. I would appreciate that you vote, again, not with how long somebody's been here or however much experience, base it on what's right for our young people, what's right for our city. That's all I ask. At the end of the day, my friends and family are still going to love me. I'm still going to be involved. I'm not going anywhere after this meeting. I'm still going to be in Brockton. I'm still... You guys aren't getting rid of me. I'm not going anywhere. And it's been also said that I'm not from Ward Six, or I just moved there. I did just move there. I moved to Ward Six with my family. I have a child who's in the school system, East Junior High. I went to Ashfield. Ashfield is in Ward Six, correct me if I'm wrong. I had a crush on Mrs. Bibby. When I was in sixth grade, she teaches at Hancock School right now. She didn't choose me, she should have, but, again, my ties are here. I'm Brockton-born and bred, I bleed Brockton. I love the city. So again, I do... I would appreciate if you vote with your heart and you vote for me. I do feel I am the right choice. Again, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Taggart. Okay, this will bring us on to the question-and-answer portion of the meeting. I'll invite each of the candidates back up in the same alphabetical order. Any member of the convention has an opportunity to ask one question of each candidate, in the interest, again, of time. If you really don't have a pressing question, it's okay to defer to the other members. And the responses are limited to one minute in the responses, okay? So at this time, I'll invite Mr. Daly back up to the microphone, and I'll ask if there are any members of the committee who would like to ask a question of Mr. Daly.
Mr. President?
Well, I recognize Counsel Rodriguez and then Counsel Dubois.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Daly?
How you doing?
Being a member of a school committee from a system that is currently over 70 percent minority, how do you plan on working with your fellow school committee members to diversify the system, and I don't mean the students, I'm talking about the system itself, to better represent the 70 percent student population who happens to be minority?
Our school system has, for years, gone to colleges, tried to recruit minority teachers. We have done everything we can. Unfortunately, we don't pay the same money that Boston does. We get the teachers in, we get them trained, and then they go out for $15,000, $20,000 more to other systems. We are constantly recruiting minority candidates, constantly recruiting people with a diverse background, so that they can come into our system and be good examples for our students. I went to a high school in Boston, 70, 80 percent minority. So I'm used to working in a system where everybody has a choice, and I never believed, growing up, that the color and the place where somebody was born, the sitting next to me, made a difference in their education. They had the same teacher I did, they had the same opportunities. Were there attitudes that they had to deal with? I'm sure they were.
Mr. Daly, I'll ask you to conclude your answer.
Thank you.
Is there another member of the committee? Counselor Stewart with one question for Mr. Daly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, Mr. Daly, good to see you as well.
Nice to see you.
So in Brockton, we often applaud ourselves, we're doing a really great job with our school system and the performance of our students, particularly if you look at the high school as a tier-one school. But we struggle in the elementary and middle schools. We have a number of schools that are not at the tier-one level. Can you talk to me more about how you would... what your thoughts about the elementary-middle school level, which feeds into the high school, and to improve performance at that level?
Honestly, it's up to the teachers, it's up to the parents, to make sure their kids come to school, come to school on time. The teachers in the classroom have to be top-notch teachers. They have to buy into the system that we're trying to teach. They have to be able to work with kids. They are our front line. If there's a problem with a child, they need to work with our counselors to see that a child can get the counseling that they need. I mean, poverty is probably the highest... has the highest degree of failure in our schools. It's just something that we have to deal with, but honestly, it's going to be an ongoing situation, because our schools change every year. Those kids that were succeeding are now going on to another level, and we have a new group of kids that have the same problems that those kids have overcome. So it's going to be a constant struggle in our system. Early education is going to be one of the big things. Four-year-olds, that's going to...
Mr. Daly, I have to ask you to wrap up your response, please.
Okay. If we can get a full program for all four-year-olds in the city, I think it will add to our ability to close the gap. Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Joyce with a question for Mr. Daly.
Hi, Jim.
Hello.
After serving six years with you and knowing that you were on the board for six years, my question is not so much what you've done or what your understanding is of the position, because I know you have a solid understanding of what's involved with being a member of the school committee. But after leaving the school committee voluntarily and then coming to us to be reappointed, to be appointed, my question, Sarah, is more about what your inten... Have you thought about what your intention is once this interim appointment is over, when the general election takes place in 19 months?
I really have not thought about that. As I said, I enjoy working on committees. I enjoy the work. So for me to make a decision right now, what I'm going to want to do next year, I can do that, but what if I change my mind? Am I then flip-flopping? Am I hypocrite? I think I have to do the job again, make sure I'm in tune with everything, and if I find I'm not able to perform as I have before, then I need to step aside. If I enjoy it, if our performance is getting up there, I think I would probably enjoy continuing.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have another member of the joint convention with a question? Counsel Dubois.
Hello, Mr. Daly, thank you for being here.
Shalom, how are you?
I'm good.
I'm good, I'm good. So, in, can you just explain why, seeing as we are in the budget process, and I know the work of the school committee is really extensive, sometimes meeting more than three times a week, why, having already been through the budget cycle, why, how you're going to be able to hit the ground running? And that is really why I'm supporting you for this 19 months. How can you do that, and why can you do that?
In coming up with eight budgets that were balanced, not by myself, obviously, as a committee, because my voice counts as one of seven and eight. I believe I can work with our members through some of the history of the system that I know. One of the things that we have done in the past when money, we saw money was short, is we took and put money in certain accounts so they could pre-purchase stuff, knowing that the time was coming. Then when the time came, we knew exactly where to cut because we had done our due diligence in doing that. I understand how to read the budget, understand where priorities have to be, and the priorities are the classroom. We do need the supports, we need pares, we need secretaries, we need custodians. But without that front line, and without that as our main objective, there'll be a problem in our budget. I think I can keep focused on that.
Thank you.
I guess I would ask the members of the joint convention to limit the question and answer session to questions, and we can get into endorsements when it's time to cast a ballot, or else we're going to be here all night long. Are there any other questions for Mr. Daley?
Could I just correct one quick thing?
If you could do it quickly, please, Mr. Daley.
Two seconds. I never moved to Colorado, I went to Colorado to go to school. I was in Colorado for seven years. I've always been a resident of Brockton since I moved here in 1991.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Daley, and thank you. We will move on now to our next candidate, who is present here this evening, Stephen And at this time, I will recognize any members of the convention who may have a specific question for Mr. Foot. We'll start with Counselor Barnes this time.
Good evening, Mr. Foot.
Good evening, Counselor.
Reading your information that you submitted, I see nothing on here of any kind of exposure to the school committee. So my question is, besides your relationship with Mr. Healy and attending Brockton schools, what has been your exposure to the school committee and its process and how it operates?
Well, I was a candidate for the school committee back in 2003. I've watched every one of their meetings on Brockton Community Access Cable, ever since I first started becoming involved in politics in the city around the end of the 90s. And so I've been keeping up quite a bit. I live right around the corner from the Brookfield School, so I talk to the people that wait for the kids when they come out of school, we talk and stuff like that. We just had a recent sidewalk project, the Safe Schools Sidewalk Project, it's running right down my street. So I actually had to talk to all of my neighbors about that. When we came before the council with the assessor, I was here that night, I was instrumental in helping my neighbors understand the process and helped them along with it. And I think I know quite a bit about the schools. I think having actually gone to them and been in them, I think that goes a long way to what your questioning is.
My question was about the committee, not the schools.
About what? I'm sorry, ma'am.
About the duties of the committee, not about the schools.
Of the school committee?
Yes.
I know they set the budget, I know that, well, again, I'd be one of seven people. I'm not trying to come in and reinvent the wheel. I have to, as far as, if you want to get into absolute specifics of little instances, you're going to have to give me a specific instance to address. But I think I have a well-rounded background, I have a very heavy budget background. My degree at Northeastern University is in business management, and as I stated earlier, I wrote the student activities budget for Massasoia Community College in the 94, 95 school year. So I've had experience with the school budgeting process, and in my many, many conversations with Michael Healy, he would come over to my house, ask my advice, run things by me. We've talked pretty extensively about the school.
Mr. Foot, I have to ask you to wrap up your response.
We talked pretty extensively about what was going on at the school committee.
Thank you.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Counselor Stewart.
Oh, Counselor Stewart, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Jase, I'm sorry. Counselor Stewart, I'm going to recognize both of you, however you guys want to do it.
Yeah, you know how it is.
Sturgis.
Good evening, Mr. Foot.
Good evening, Counselor.
How are you? I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Daley in terms of the diversity question. You know the diversity in this city, you know the diversity in the school system. How would you specifically work with the members of the school committee to diversify the system itself, not the population of the students, but the system itself? The teachers, the administrators, how would you diversify to better represent the student populations in the school system?
Well, Counselor, I think a lot of the situation as far as getting more minority teachers goes, you have a very strong teachers' union here in Brockton. And whatever you do is going to have to go through the teachers' union. So, without being privy to all the inside minutia of the teachers' union contract, I'd be hard-pressed to give you an answer on exactly what we could or couldn't do to raise the number of minority teachers. And as far as the central is concerned, many people think it's top-heavy. I just know with what I can see from the outside or what I read in the paper, if I was to be given this position, I could get more in-depth in it. And again, I'd be one of seven. I don't want to make anyone think I'm going to try to come in and, like I said, reinvent the wheel or try to just take over the committee or anything like that. I just want to give my fellow residents in Ward 6 the solid representation that I think they deserve. And, you know, to Mr. Daley's point about going to Colorado for school, whether he went for school or whether he went for pleasure, fact is, he wasn't here.
Okay. And I'll ask the candidates to limit their responses to the question that was actually asked. Any other ques-, Counselor Stewart?
Mr. Foot, good to see you.
Counselor.
So, actually, in thinking earlier about a comment around MCAS, we do know that the data show that since the implementation of MCAS in the Commonwealth, or actually, our graduation rates have increased, and the Commonwealth right now is experiencing the highest graduation rate in recent memory. The question for me would be, where are those kids going? So we also know that when students graduate high school, they go, they have different options, whatever that post-secondary track may be. It could be the military, it could be community college, it could be a four-year university, it could actually be a career. A disproportionate number of students, particularly who are of color and who are in poverty, tend to go to community college and not a four-year college, even though we have a high post-secondary engagement rate. And what I've discovered anecdotally, but I think also the research shows that this is a national issue, is that guidance in schools with the funding for guidance counselors isn't sufficient to support students as they make that choice, right? So, you may have a kid who is a B student or an A student, but they're not taking the right courses that make them competitive to get into college. And so their parents think they're doing well, the students think they're doing well, but at the end of the day, they're not competitive with other students. What's your thinking around that issue in Brockton, and how would you solve that problem?
Well, actually, I did the, I did it myself. I went to Brockton High School, I was a C student, basically, although I thought, you know, I knew, I now know as an adult, I could have done much better. And I went to Massasoia Community College. And I think it's a fine, fine place, I'd recommend it to anyone. Not to mention the fact, if you take your core courses at Massasoia, you're saving a lot of money, you're getting, you're staying closer to home so you don't have to live off, you can live off a campus at your own house, you don't have to pay the dormitory fees, which is the heavy cost of going to college. And then you can transfer into a four-year school when you're ready, when you're a little more mature, and you feel better. And you can get all your core courses out of the way. So, you know, your degree at the end of the day, my degree is from Northeastern University, no one says to me, hey, did you go two years to Massasoia at first? No one cares. I mean, it just depends on what you do. But that can give a student that extra two years to prepare and get going on a four-year degree. Plus the fact that many union jobs out there, I have good friends with the head of the Sprinkler Fitters Union, Peter Gibbons, they have a great apprenticeship program. You don't have to go to college to make a living, although I know a lot of people want to go, but it's not absolutely necessary. Some people are not cut out for it. And if they're not, there are apprenticeship programs with unions that these kids could maybe avail themselves of and make use of.
Mr. Chairman, may I clarify my question just a little bit, because I actually had a long introduction to it. So for a student who believes...
You could do it very briefly, though.
So for a student who believes that he or she is on track with the right grades, and they believe the right rigor to go to a four-year college, and that's their preference, but they're not prepared, they're not competitive, how do you handle a situation like that?
What do you, I don't understand what you mean by they're not prepared in the, if the grades are there, why wouldn't they be prepared? I'm just not following.
Yeah, because they may not be taking the right level of courses.
Again, I think it would get back to, you could go to the community college level and prepare yourself that way. Either if you have the grades, and you didn't, I mean, every four-year school has certain academic standards that you would have to meet to get in. And I would imagine if you can get in, you can, you would either have two choices, either take the courses at the community college level, or go into the four-year school, maybe you're not quite prepared, but you'd have to lift your game, so to speak, and adjust. Like I was saying earlier, I was a C student in high school, I was a Dean's List student at Massasoia, and I was a Dean's List student that, and graduated with honors at Northeastern University. So it wasn't what I knew, it was the motivation.
Got it.
Mr. Foot, I'll ask you to wrap up your response. We now recognize Mr. Minicello with a question.
Hello, Mr. Foot.
Yes, Mr. Minicello.
Do you think we can hear you? Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Foot. I'm very familiar with your resume, but my question to you is dealing with our students and the youth of our city. Could you just tell us the, your history and your recent involvement with the city's youth, as you would be involved, obviously, with the schools, if so, chosen? And a huge part of our involvement is with our students and young people in the city.
Well, most of my involvement does not come from being a volunteer for this or that. I talk to them. When I see them in my neighborhood, I talk to them. And we, you know, we see each other around, rather than just walk by a kid and just say, you know, just, you know, you go your, and they go theirs. I say, hey, how you doing? And you know what? Nine times out of 10, they'll actually stop and talk to you. And when they do, then you say, how's it going? You know, and then you can just go into the conversation a little bit. So, what's happening? Oh, well, we, you know, we don't have anything to do. That's what you hear 90% of the time. And I know the city's had different programs that they've tried to institute and stuff like that. But again, it's more about listening to what the kids want to do. You can have all the programs on the planet, but if the kids don't want to do them, then they're not worth the paper they're written on, and they're not worth the money you spend on them.
That wraps up your time, Mr. Foot. Any other members of the convention that would like to ask an individual question of the candidate? Counselor Dubois.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mr. Foot, thanks for being here and putting your name forward, it's wonderful of you to do. Can you please explain to me what you think or you see the school committee's role is in ensuring the effectiveness of Common Core and the educational standards of the different schools themselves?
Well, one of the things that the schools, I think, are making a mistake on is having the, some of, I know some of the schools have the kindergarten kids all the way up to the eighth grade. I think that's too much of a wide gap. I think it would work much better when you had, the elementary schools were K, or I guess in this case now pre-K through 6, and then the middle schools, the junior highs when I was going to them, in the middle, and then 9 through 12 at the high school. If you get back to that, I think you're going to find that the kids will come around to their own age levels and maturity levels and stuff like that. I think it would be easier on them. And I realize that some of this might be budgetary constraints as far as which schools have more kids and all that. Again, you know, I only know, you know, I know what I read in the paper, I know what I see from paying attention and talking to people around town. But until I actually get in there, see the actual statistics and all the different things that school committee members actually have in front of them, I know they get some large packet every week of different statistical information. And from watching the meetings, I know that it's PowerPoint presentation after PowerPoint presentation, tons of statistical stuff, which I'm a wonk at, I love that stuff. I have a very analytical mind, I can analyze data and come to conclusions. I think I'll fit right in, and again, like I said, I want to, I'm planning on being one of seven, not to try to, you know, take over the committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Are there any other members of the convention with a question for Mr. Foot? Seeing no further questions, I'll excuse Mr. Foot and invite the next candidate up to the podium. We'll ask Ozzy Jordan to please come forward. And I will entertain, I'll recognize members of the convention that would like to ask a question of Mr. Jordan. Mr. Minicello and then Counselor Rodriguez.
Mr. Jordan, I'll ask you the same question I asked Mr. Foot, and that is, I certainly know your resume with respect to what you've done, but with respect to the youth of this city and the students, could you just elaborate for the panel, your involvement and your most recent involvement with organizations that deal with the city's young people?
My most recent involv-, whoops, too close. My most recent involvement was last, what day was it? Friday, 13th, I believe it was. I was at the alternative school in one of the classes, talking to approximately 15 youngsters, providing them some information about life in general. Other things I've done, constantly, while I've been on the community schools program, trying to think now, goes back to 90, I think that was 98. So my involvement there has been consistent, except for the one caveat that you're on three, off one, on three, off one. So, other than that, I've been on there, I've been the longest sitting member on that particular group. Individually, there are individual groups that I've sat in on, some of the activities that have gone on around the city, when you have the...
There's a lot of technology budgets.
Sorry. Yeah. Hopefully, that will be a little better. Won't be blowing folks' ears out. Attending some of the meetings that deal with the various groups around the city as far as my belief in the legacy of children and participating in all the policy sides of it, as opposed to the actual standing out there and doing stuff with kids. I think people that have gone to the store with me hate going through the CAS register because quite often when I see folks that are at the CAS register, I ask them, if they're of school age, where they're going, what they may want to do, and give them helpful hints on where and what kinds of schools they could attend, scholarships, all kinds of things. So it's various things that I do at various times.
Where were we? Counselor Rodriguez, I believe, had a question.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan.
Good evening.
I'm going to ask you the same question that I had previously asked the other candidates. And as you know, our school system is pretty diverse. The city is following the same footsteps. What would you specifically do? Maybe if I try it this way, I think it probably will be answered. What would you specifically do to work with your fellow school committee members to assure that there is a bit more diversity in the system itself? The system, from the administrators all the way down to the classroom teachers, what would you specifically, you personally, would do to assure that there's a little more diversity in our school system?
First thing I think we have to do is step out of the box. One of the things we could do, besides going around to those areas where we can believe we could recruit, and that doesn't mean just going through the southern loop, we're looking to get talent anywhere we can, anywhere in the country. But to bring that talent here, we could do one simple thing. Let's see if we can't do a dual program. We're bringing them there, how about whoever they're with also try and find a job locally? That would make some sense. For a person to leave wherever they are, unless they're a student just coming out of college and not married or not attached in any way, that's easy for them to come. But someone who's maybe a seasoned person and may want to come here because they like the way our system is and the various things we have to offer, their other half also needs to do, have some work here. So one thing we could maybe do is create some kind of a program in cooperation with a whole group of individuals, that whole circle that makes up our state, local community, et cetera, and see if we can't put some kind of a jobs program together that would bring the teacher in, but also bring their partner in, in some way. Now, again, we can't guarantee, but we certainly can make aware...
some way. Now, again, we can't guarantee, but we certainly can make aware and help see if we can find a job for somebody in that situation. That's just one.
Do we have any other members with a question? Counselor Stewart.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, good to see you.
Yes.
So my numbers may be a little bit obtuse here, but we have a high school system that's roughly 4,500 students, and we have a number of alternative high schools and programs for students at that level, which total roughly 1,000 students. The high school performs well. Some people would say that that system, that alternative system, is actually separating or segregating students who are struggling at the high school, placing them outside of the high school system, which allows our high school to do well. What's your thought on the alternative pathways at the high school level?
As I stated earlier, I don't think we have enough programs for the children. If we've got, what, 17-plus thousand children in the system, if I had my magic wand, we might have 17,000 different programs. Each one's an individual. Each one may need a specific program. That's unrealistic, and I know that. But do we have enough programs? I'm not sure we have enough. I'd have to look to see how and what we're doing each one of those. I do believe in alternative programs. Some of them allow the children, if they stay there X amount of months and can perform well, they can go back. I think it was you or someone mentioned college. That's not the only situation. Yes, that works very well. I'm sure some of you have college kids sitting at home with degree or multiple degrees and can't get a job. So all the other jobs out there that exist, we need to ensure that we're taking care of those kids, too. Not every kid can do it at the college level, although I believe in that. That was done to me when I was about one years old. It started then. You're going to college, not, "What college are you going to?" So, I mean, those are the kinds of things I believe in. But I'm realistic about who is in this city and who we need to deal with. So we need to provide, again, programs for everybody, as best we can with the resources that we have. Yeah, thank you.
Any other members with a question? Mrs. Joyce.
Welcome, Ozzy.
Thank you.
Please forgive my informality. I just can't do the Mr. Jordan, or I'm a little less formal. You've been involved in the city for as long as I can remember, and you've always been involved in different committees, and you've just always been a face and a name that I've known. I don't recall that you've ever run for the office of school committee. I could be wrong.
If you ask your fellow councilperson there, I think she can inform you on that.
Well, in any case, what brings you forward this, at this juncture? What is the catalyst that brought you that, the reason that you're interested in filling Mike Haley's place on the committee this time?
I think we're in a, the city right now, I believe, is in a position on both sides, the city side and the school side. We have an opportunity to do some great things at this point in time. This is kind of a transition. There are a lot of new people all up and down the line, whether it be at the superintendent's level, at the mayor's level. We have new councilors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This was a good time to come in and to join in that, to bring my expertise. And I believe in doing a lot of things out of the box. When you don't have resources, you go find them. One of the biggest things I believe in, and many of you heard me say this, in the 48 continuous states, someone has resolved the problem. Find that someone, that city, that school system. Find that, whatever the resolution was. Bring it here, tweet it. Now we got a resolution, rather than try to create the wheel. That's something we don't do enough of. We've got multiple resources in this area. I think we don't utilize those the way we should. That wouldn't cost us any money, by the way. But that kind of expertise, the kinds of things I've done for many years is what I can bring forth. I believe in putting a solution forth, not like just another problem or saying yes. I try to always answer with a solution, if I can. And it may not be the solution that's accepted, but at least to put one on the table for folks to think of.
Thank you, Ozzy.
Any other members of the convention with a question for Mr. Jordan? Counselor Dubois.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Mr. Jordan. I want to commend you for putting your name forward. I think you're a valuable member of Brockton and Ward 6, so thank you. My question is, the school committee sets the vision and holds the school department responsible for meeting standards. Can you please give this committee an idea of what type of vision you would want to help set for the school department, and how comfortable you would feel to hold the school department accountable, say, if the graduation rate or the number of children going into alternative schools became in some way inflated or in a way that was a detriment to the city?
Yes, there's two parts to that. Standards come from federal, state, down to the city, and this is what you have to do. This is what you have to meet. Those things are something that, like it or not, the 50 states of the United States receive that, and that's what's happening. The second part of that, how one would, ask that again, if you would, please.
So I first asked about what type of vision you have, and then the second is, if you saw an area, would you be willing to recognize an area where the school needed to improve? And how might you, in a difficult situation, be able to express your opinion to the administration and seek improvement to standards if you were to deem them not acceptable?
One thing, I sat on the strategic plan that was submitted last night to the school committee. I was on that for about a year and a half. Last summer, it was approximately 15 to 25 of us met every Monday night for about three hours, putting this plan together. That's the kind of thing that I believe in doing, that you need to do to make things operational. As far as being able to sit down with whatever level of individual to make sure that they're doing things, if you have systems in place, starting at the top, going all the way down the line, with everybody being accountable, with job descriptions, with a good evaluation system for everybody in the system, and when you have a strategic plan, if you are in the system and you're not doing something to the plan, we don't need you. The goals and the plan is what we need to be doing, i.e., everybody who works, whether it be on the city side or the school side, we're talking about the school side, needs to have that. Okay? That way, you accomplish your goal. Anything else, you're wasting time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I allowed Mr. Jordan a little extra time, because it was kind of a part two to the question there, so I wanted to be fair and give him an opportunity to respond. Any other questions for Mr. Jordan?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no others, well, thank you very much, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you.
We'll invite up now to the podium, Mr. Jacob Taggert. At this time, I'll ask members of the convention for who has a question for Mr. Taggert. I'll recognize Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Taggert. During your opening, you mentioned you had a prior relationship with the school committee when you were in high school. You mentioned my colleague, Mr. Ian Arie. Could you clarify that? Because it intrigued my interest, and I think it would be best to clarify it for everybody here, if you could do that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So when I was, it was 1994. Basically, I'd become the student rep. I actually worked in the Red English Office. I worked there. We had some issues at school, and I spareheaded trying to resolve these issues. That was with the school committee, again, that Mr. Ian Arie can attest to. And I'm pretty sure Mr. Brady was a school committee member, if I recall?
I believe so.
Yeah. Worked with Robert Jones. Mr. Mayor Farwell was there. Anytime there was an issue, Jacob Taggert and his junior, I addressed it. And I'm pretty sure I addressed it in the proper way. And we resolved it, and I had a great relationship at that time, and I still do with, the whole process. I really felt good with how our elected officials, how they addressed the issues with myself and our students. But I did spare, like I said, I spareheaded it.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Taggert? I'll recognize Counselor Rodriguez.
Well, I might as well just conclude my-
I think I can ask it for you now.
I'm an equal abuser here, so I'm gonna, Mr. Taggert, thank you for being here as well.
Thank you.
You know what the question is? I'm going to ask you the same question.
I was hoping you would.
But I'm actually looking for some ideas. And I know sometimes we tend to, you know, just say, "We're going to find some teachers. We're going to do this. We're going to do that." But I'm actually specifically looking for some ideas, some thoughts. What can we do? I mean, there's no secret that, you know, you've got seven members of the school committee, and seven members of the school committee happen to be on the Caucasian side. We've got a school system that is top-heavy in terms of diversity from one side to the other, and yet you've got a student population that's heading the other direction. So what specific, specifically, would you do? Some ideas, some thoughts to diversify the population that's heading in the opposite directions from the student population?
First and foremost, myself, if I were appointed, is part of the solution, or part of making it so we can get more diversity. I am a minority. And-
I didn't know that.
I think, yeah, thank you. And people need to feel comfortable. When I say people, I mean residents, parents. I believe we need to get parents engaged. And I think, whether we want to admit it or not, I'm just going to say it how it is, we need to feel comfortable. And a lot of that, a lot of that does go off of the visual. And I also do understand the situations, because that's who I am. So first and foremost, that would be a way. And then reaching out. I'm not sure, I don't think it's a part of the requirements as a school committee member to recruit, but I am a recruiter for my job. I deal with people of all different levels. And I think with my leadership and my ability to get people involved and engaged, I think just putting me there is a start. And then when I get on, I'm going to learn. I do think we have some very knowledgeable school committee members. Even the ones that just jumped on, I think I'd be surrounded by people with experience, but I think putting somebody on that has my diversity is a step in the right direction. Do I have the answer, the magic answer? No. But again, I do feel me being involved is a great step in that direction.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Joyce.
Hi, welcome. It's good to see you again.
It's my pleasure.
I know that you're quite involved in the community, and I really applaud that. I'm going to sneak in two questions as a two-potter. My number one question is, what is your expectation, well, one of the things, and I can see it tonight, if you're not at a meeting, you can't make decisions, and you can't be part of setting goals and-
Yes, you can.
And governing. And that's what we do. So when new, and I've been on the committee for a while now. One of the challenges that new members have is that they don't understand the time commitment that's involved in serving on the school committee. So my number one question is, what is your, what is your expectation on the time commitment involved? What is your understanding on the time commitment involved? And secondly, what are your plans, if you have any? And if you don't, please, you know, express that, once you are, once the 19 months is up, much like I asked Mr. Daley.
I'll answer the second part first, if that's okay. I don't know what's going to happen in 19 months. I actually don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. I don't know what's going to happen an hour from now. I do know, right now, I am invested in our young people. And that goes without saying, because this is what I do. I go, I have, you know, basketball players, that I go to their schools, and I speak to their principals. I speak to their teachers. This is something I'm actively doing. This is something I have been doing for almost 20 years. As far as the time commitment, my wife's fine. She doesn't want me at home anyways.
That's good, because you won't be there.
As far as the time commitment, I can do it. I'm not, I'm a very persistent person. I'm a very determined person. I didn't come here without knowing that I'm going to give 137%. The commitment is there with me, and I've proven it by what I do. Like I said, we can go down the list of what I've done, but I want my actions to speak for themselves. And I've been involved, and I've been involved for years. This is nothing, I know I seem like I'm the rookie or the veteran. That's definitely not the case at all. So the time commitment, I can handle it, not worried about it.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Counselor Barnes.
Yes, Mr. Taggert. Along the same lines as Counselor Rodriguez's question, specifically, what kind of ideas can you bring to the school committee with regard to some of the challenges with the budget? They've lost several million dollars, and they're struggling with that. So what do you think you can bring to those deliberations on how to more effectively spend the funds that we do have to better the children?
Again, with my background, thank you for the question, with my background, I look at budgets every day. I balance the budget. I actually oversee my store plus four others. That's what I do. Again, do I have the answer for everything? No. But I definitely know how to read a budget. I definitely know how to manage payroll. I definitely know how to control my profit and loss. I know I can, that is another skill I have from my profession right now, that I can bring to the table. Do I have every answer? No. But I know how to read a budget. I know how to make the proper cuts, and I know how to manage, you know, manage what we have properly.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Dubois.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Mr. Taggert. I think you're great, and I really am glad that you are now my neighbor. So thanks for moving into the neighborhood.
Diagonally crossed.
I think your wife wants you to be at home, too. But you can do both. You can do both. So my question is, what are your visions for this school district five to 10 years from now? And what systemic changes will you work toward to achieve that vision?
My vision is for every student, not just in Ward 6, because again, we break it apart, you know, Ward 6, Ward 5, Ward 7. As a school committee, we make decisions for the whole city. As far as what I vision, is I just want all our young people to have the best opportunity they possibly can to be successful. I do think our schools do very well. I'm very proud to be from Brockton. If you don't, I mean, I'm sure you understand that. And I appreciate the education that we offer to our students. I just want every kid to have a chance. If they have a chance and we support them, that's my vision. I can't tell you anything other than that my vision is to make sure all our young people, not just from Ward 6, but from Ward 5, 2, 3. That's my vision, to give them the best opportunity we possibly can for them to succeed, and to be a support system for them, and to be a support system and have their parents engaged, because I do think that is a big part of it. We need to have more parent involvement. Again, I've been attending, you know, a lot of these meetings. We need more people. A lot of times, it's just the same people showing up to meetings. We need to get more people engaged. We need to have more parents become comfortable with being part of the process. Again, together, we can, it's a lot, it's going to be a lot more productive and better for our students. If we all work together, get them engaged, and again, that's my vision, is to make sure we give them the best chance they can.
So just the part two of that is, if your-
Counselor, briefly, please.
Yes. If your vision is to have people become, parents become more engaged, what systemic changes are you going to work toward to achieve that vision?
Kind of work, like be, I'm going to outreach, reach out to the parents. But again, I know certain school committee members that I deal with, and some of you guys, like I said, I don't, I don't know. I haven't dealt with on a regular basis. But like Mr. Hennington, become involved, go to the activities, try to engage the parents, reach out to them. That's a skill set, again, I do feel I possess, and that's what I want, more parent involvement. I hope that's answering the question properly.
That's a great answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ian Arie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Taggert. I think some point, you're trying to reference that I once served on the Brockton School Committee?
Yes.
I did, right?
Yes, you did, sir.
Correct. Thank you. And my colleagues love it when I bring that history up. They just love me for that.
Still look the same.
But you're right. That's right. And I think the year that you-
How many years did you serve, Counselor?
20 years, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Stick with me, you're going places. No. And I think the point, in regards to what you mentioned, our issue back then in 1994, 95, was when we were voting and had to put in place the voluntary desegregation plan that wasn't in place at that particular time. There were some issues pertaining to that, and that's what gave us, during those years, the Plough School, the Angelo School, the Onown School, for 90% reimbursement back to the city of Brockton. But our schools were unbalanced, and there's a lot of conversation here this evening in- were unbalanced. And there's a lot of conversation here this evening in regards to still minority population in teaching. And it was the same issue back then. But that was the issue then. But my question, and it was somewhat answered a little bit in the last couple of questions from a couple of other people that were asking, time committed, you know the time that's committed. There's no doubt about it. In any position you serve, and even as a city council, it's time committed. You have to make that commitment. Whether you have a family and all have families, I was fortunate that, you know, I didn't have that other piece, but still, it's a commitment, because I work 40, 50 hours a week as well. Vision, I think you answered that to what I was somewhat looking for as well. But to me, there was always one most important role you played as, serving as a member of the Brockton School Committee. And it was always simple. And it was something that I always used to drive home to myself and to do back when I served as a proud member of Ward Five, when I represented those people, which the mayor had the opportunity to serve in that same seat. And I think it's just a simple answer that I'm looking for, is, you know, what is that important role that you play as a school committee member, representing the people of Ward Six?
What is the...
Yeah, what's the, what's the most, and if you're lost with it, I mean, it's, to me, it's a simple answer back.
Oh, no, it's just because you guys ask long questions, and I get... I like the delivery, though, sir.
That's the question. It's 20 years of experience.
So, what role as a school committee?
Yeah, what do you...
Spareheading, getting out there, getting people, like I said, involved, being a leader, being a leader for that area. And, again, it's not just that area, but for, for the whole school, the whole school system. If, again, I'm not sure if I'm answering the question correctly.
Anyway, but I mean, what I was looking for, and you wouldn't know it the way I'd be saying it, but I think the most important role that anybody has that serves as a member of the Brockton School Committee is always remember to represent, in the best instance, the parents and children of that ward, as well as the city in its entirety. It's all about them. That's what it's all about. And I think that's what's most important. And I think you hit it somewhat when you mentioned vision, when the counsel asked that question. And you want to keep parents involved, because parents are what make up the school system today, as well as the children. But it's all, it's all for them. So, with that being said, that was my question. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good luck, Mr. Taggart.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Henningson.
Hi, Mr. Taggart. Thank you for showing up tonight.
Thank you.
I just have one question. What do you personally think you can bring to the school committee?
Not, again, not to, I don't want to come off the wrong way, but more heart, more passion, a different perspective. I don't think you guys have a Jacob on the school committee. I don't. And building teams myself, I think we need to have different parts. A lot of times, we can have the same parts, you know, but I think a good team is having different parts and different perspectives. And I know, again, we will definitely, I bring a different perspective than the majority of you, from what I see. And I also can, I can work with you guys, but I have, I have the passion. I mean, that's the best I can say, is I bring that, my heart and my passions in it. It's always been in it. When, again, with his question, Mr. Ian Airey's question, and Mrs. Dubois's question is time commitment. Mrs. Joyce, this is what I do already. I'm already involved. And, again, no matter what happens, tonight, I'm still gonna be involved. But, like I said, heart and passion, that's what I bring. In a business sense, because that's also what I do professionally. So, that's what I think I can bring. Actually, no, that's what I know I can bring to the school committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, Mr. Taggart. I come to your store often, always, and I'm often treated well, so I appreciate it. Actually, I always treat it well. So, the latest research shows that the teacher is the most important element to a kid's success in the classroom. If you, if anyone were to follow the trends, there have been different ideas or theories that change about how you achieve student success. And so, it's partly technology, it's maybe smaller classroom size, but the number-one determining factor, you could be a poor kid, underperforming, but if you have a great teacher, you're more likely to succeed in that setting because of the teacher. So, my question is, how do you, in your mind, what is a great teacher? And then, as a school committee member, how do you help make a teacher great?
What makes a great teacher? I'll give you an example. I am, I don't, I love English. That was my class in school and college. So, it was kind of an easier course for me, because I loved it. Math, to me, I didn't, you know, it wasn't something I just, I loved. But, so I could be a B, I would be a B student in it. But when I had a teacher who would get me engaged and make it fun and challenge me, that's what I think makes a good teacher. Somebody that is willing to bring their student to another level, to challenge them, to encourage, to encourage, you know, constructively, things that the student does well. But I don't know what study this was. I also think, we also, you had said earlier about guidance. I think that plays a big part.
Before I run out of time, so the second part of the question is, how would you, as a school committee member, help to make great teachers? What's your role in that, do you think?
Help to try to identify, working with the schools, to trying to identify when our teachers are doing very well, which they do, to identify and try to replicate that with others, with other teachers. Try to encourage it positively. Try to, and get the teachers to, like we just said, to inspire their students, to challenge their students, and identify it. This is what I would think I would do in that role, is try to identify. When they're doing a good job, and to, like I said, duplicate it. It's probably the best answer I can give you.
Great. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other members with a question for Mr. Taggart?
Mr. Napoli, you have a question?
I'll assume that's a no. At this point, then, we'll thank you and excuse you, Mr. Taggart. Thank you.
Thank you.
That completes the question and answer portion. So, at this time, we'll prepare to take the first ballot. And just to, for those who may have come in late, the first ballot taken tonight is a runoff ballot. The purpose of this first ballot is to reduce the field of candidates from seven to two. This ballot will not select the selected candidate. This ballot will reduce the field from seven to two. And if there should be a tie for first or second, we could potentially allow three or four to go forward. No one would be eliminated. And then, on the second ballot, and therefore, the first candidate to obtain a majority would be selected by the joint convention. We all on board? Okay. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll in alphabetical order.
Barnes.
Joyce Azak.
Carpenter.
Ozzy Jordan.
Clark.
Ozzy Jordan.
Cruz.
Ozzy Jordan.
Denafley.
James Daley.
Dubois.
James Daley.
Ian Airey. Jacob Taggart. Henningson.
Jacob Taggart.
Joyce.
Ozzy Jordan.
Minicello. Monahan.
Ozzy Jordan.
Robinson.
Ozzy Jordan.
Rodriguez.
Jacob Taggart.
Stewart.
Ozzy Jordan.
Stodinsky.
Oswald Jordan.
Sullivan, Judy Sullivan.
James Daley.
Robert Sullivan.
Jacob Taggart Jr.
We'll just take a second to compile and... One vote for Joyce Azak, three votes for James Daley, nine votes for Ozzy Jordan, four votes for Jacob Taggart. It's 13, 16, 17. Did I miss one? Jacob Taggart. Ozzy and Jacob Taggart. The top two candidates are Ozzy Jordan and Jacob Taggart.
So, with nine votes, Mr. Jordan, with four votes, Mr. Taggart are the two top vote-getters. And we'll now go on to a second ballot. And, again, to refresh everyone's memory, this is a brand-new ballot. All members of the joint convention are free to vote for either of the two finalists, regardless of who they cast their first ballot for. But this time around... This time around, though, there are only now two names in consideration by the joint convention, Mr. Jordan and Mr. Taggart. So, once again, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll in alphabetical order.
Azak.
Jacob Taggart.
Barnes.
Ozzy Jordan.
Carpenter.
Ozzy Jordan.
Clark.
Ozzy Jordan.
Cruz.
Ozzy Jordan.
Denafley.
Ozzy Jordan.
Dubois.
Ozzy Jordan.
Ian Airey. Jacob Taggart. Henningson.
Jacob Taggart.
Joyce.
Ozzy Jordan.
Minicello. Monahan.
Ozzy Jordan.
Robinson.
Ozzy Jordan.
Rodriguez.
Jacob Taggart.
Stewart.
Ozzy Jordan.
Stodinsky.
Ozzy Jordan.
Judy Sullivan.
Ozzy Jordan.
Robert Sullivan.
Jacob Taggart Jr.
Thirteen votes for Ozzy Jordan, five votes for Jacob Taggart.
Congratulations to Mr. Jordan, who's selected to fill the Ward Six. I will recognize Counsel President Sullivan for a moment of personal privilege.
Thank you. I wanted to, first of all, thank Mayor Carpenter for his leadership tonight. This was uncharted waters for many of us. And I think a big round of applause for the mayor for running the meeting appropriately. I also would like to thank Vice Chair Minicello from the school committee, Phil Nazarella from the Solicitors, and Mac Gilday Legislative Council, who worked tirelessly. We had many meetings and many discussions about the process tonight. I want to thank all the elected officials for serving here tonight, and, of course, all the people that put their names out there. Mr. Jordan, congratulations and welcome to the school committee. I also would like to recognize Kathy Smith, our superintendent, also... Also, my friend and former colleague, Todd Petty Concert Lodge. Thanks for being here tonight, Todd. Lastly, lastly, we also have another school committee, Southeastern Regional. We do have two representatives from Brockton, Wayne McAllister, Mac Lindy, and Mac Lindy's here tonight, so thank you.
I'll now recognize School Committee Vice Chair Tom Minicello.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to all the candidates. It goes to show you that there are so many good and qualified people here in Brockton. All of the candidates who submitted their applications, letters of interest, did so out of the goodness of their hearts, and for the betterment of the city of Brockton, and certainly the Brockton Public Schools. So, thank you all. You're all excellent candidates and excellent people, and we're all lucky to have you here in Brockton. I would like to compliment Bob Sullivan, who I worked well with with respect to this committee and the mayor, and also Phil Nazarella, and, of course, Attorney Gilday. They were excellent to work with. And unfortunately, we were placed in a position to have to have such a convention. But we did so with dignity, and I think it was a good, clean process. I'd also like to thank Wanda Alves from the school department, who... Who would gather all the information as it trickled in, and it did, it trickled in over time. Some would come to Bob, some would come to us, some would come to me, some would come to Wanda. We tried to get it out as quick as possible to everyone, but Wanda did a great job, as she always does. So, again, thank you, and I respect all of my colleagues, both city and school side, and we all look forward for the betterment of the citizens of Brockton to work together.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I missed a former elected official, Richard Bath, Ward Two School Committee Member. Thank you for being here.
Because he's got an obstructed-vue seat behind the pole. At this time, I'd like to recognize Counsel Cruz.
Thank you. I would like a moment of personal privilege. It has nothing to do with what we did tonight, although we have a future student born. I want to, I have a grand niece who was born about an hour, a great niece born about an hour ago. Elizabeth Cruz Geddes, welcome to the world.
I would like to make a brief comment. I felt, sitting as the chair of this joint convention, was inappropriate for me to make any comments during the deliberations. But virtually all of the candidates I consider to be personal friends, I think was very difficult for all of us up here with the relationships we have with multiple candidates to make a selection. But I'll honestly say, I think any of the names who came forward would have served Ward Six very well. And I think they should all be recognized and thanked for their willingness to offer to serve. So, thank you. I would also like to thank City Council President Sullivan and Vice Chair of the School Committee, Tom Minicello, for their leadership in having us all work very cooperatively to have a successful proceeding tonight. And I also want to wish Mr. Jordan the best of luck in his role as the new representative of the Ward Six School Committee. You're gonna go to work immediately. We've got a tough budget, so you're gonna start earning that minute pay very quickly. Tomorrow evening, that's right. Finance Committee meeting tomorrow evening. We expect you there early.
Bring the food. He brings the food, too.
He buys the pizza afterwards. That's the whole new guy rule, right? Yeah. New guy buys the pizza. And finally, Counsel President Sullivan reminds me that we have scheduled our next quarterly joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee, along with myself participating. This will be our second quarterly meeting, June 19th, in the East Middle School Auditorium, if you could reserve that date, June 19th, in the East Middle School Auditorium, at 6:30, I think?
6:30, sorry.
6:30 PM, I think we agreed upon as the time. 6:30 PM, June 19th, at the East Middle School, for a quarterly joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee. It's an opportunity for any residents to come and have an opportunity to listen to updates, but also ask questions of any of the members of the City Council or School Committee, or myself. So, I think at that, I believe we've concluded business. My thanks to all...
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. If I can have a moment of personal privilege, yes, please.
Personal privilege. I didn't see it, Counselor.
I just want to make sure that I invite everyone to Massa Soiet Community College Theater's production of The Wizard of Oz. It is happening this weekend, Friday, Saturday at 8 o'clock, Sunday at 3 o'clock. You will miss a phenomenal show. If you do not attend, it's Brockton, Brockton brings you Broadway. So, please come out.
Awesome. And I spoke to someone who saw the dress rehearsal. I understand it's an outstanding production, and I am planning on attending, and I hope everyone will.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, properly seconded, all in favor. Obedience. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.